Well, well, well. We are gathered here today in honor of me. I am the hostess of your feast. You do know I'm a very powerful drug, more sophisticated than any thug. My name is opiate, op for short. I travel mostly through the Atlantic Seaport. I turn people into zombies for sport. I grow from the field of poppy. I've been longer than you, I've been around longer than US history. I come from the fields of Afghanistan, so I fly first class like a businessman. I fly on planes and ride on trains in the secret compartments of your car. Yes, I've been around the world so far. So hypnotic, even stronger than your legally laced chronic. I have people scattered about from the courtroom to the boardroom. I heard your grandson was born addicted to me in the delivery room. I can even make Lazarus rise from the dead, because I'm a legal drug, that's what I said. I've got everybody in the world addicted to me. I wrote my eyes with the phrase "drug free." You know they wrote a song about me? They named it "Molly Featuring Percocet." Haven't you heard of it? From when the kids say it's lit. So much so, you can find me at all the parties, having sex with all the hotties. You know, like Bill Cosby? I'll make the bride cheat on her groom. I'll make that sweet elementary teacher do lines in the school bathrooms. I have a preacher repenting at God on his knees. I have such qualities, mixed with morphine, codeine, and thibane. I can make you go completely insane in the membrane. You can find me chilling in the suburbs with the physicians, or being sold for $10 a pop to pay for college tuition. I got the skills to pay the bills. Pimp it ain't easy. I make a good girl act sleazy, just ask for the wheezy. I got crack addicts in dark alleys puffing on glass. I got your baby mama selling her for cash. I got movie stars smoking up smack. Catch me outside, how about that? I'm gonna tell the truth, because this is as good as it gets. I pull out what's already in you. That's how I'll make it do what it do. Kids, more than kids getting shot by a Glock in the head, because I put them to bed. Thrown away like a lifeless piece of meat. Blow a crime out in the streets. Nobody cares about the chicks turning tricks for a fix. We don't love them hoes. So what, she was a mother of four? Them babies ain't gonna see their mama no more. They'll grow up in the system, and when they do, I'll get 'em. Somebody said we're living in the land of the free? More like the land of the OD. And as long as I'm making this money, all eyes on me. They say this is a Christian nation? Ha! I laugh. We ain't saved. Everybody popping pills from the bottle? I said we all slaves. Rock music talking about getting shot by a cop on the block because of color of our skin? More like PTSD kicking in. For me, 14 hours overworked riding the men, riding in the wind. All day on their feet, hitting the beat with no respect on the street. Wires mad, kids missing their moms and dads. Don't know if they're gonna get a knock on the door with nothing but an empty apology and a badge. Cops boosting bricks from drug dealers for kicks, looking for dead bodies in the sticks. I'm not saying it's okay, but by the way the government pension is set up, they saving lives and going bankrupt. They saving lives and going bankrupt. Oh, Jesus. Did you know one in four people are addicted to me? And I'm solely working on one in three. Every day, 1,000 people in the ER get treated by me. My list of clients includes MS, lupus, Crohn's, leukoarthritis, and cancer. They all think I'm the answer. I even got my pics getting their fix in a dentist's chair. Were you looking there? I got people that will kick their dog for some of this blue fog. They think I can heal, but my aim is to shoot and kill. They are sadly mistaken when I leave them in their boots shaking. But I settled from the side effects of withdrawal. You can't leave me, y'all. I got nurses doing the most, getting high from the hit off the patient zone, receiving half the recommended dosed. All walk around with a stethoscope looking like ghosts. And let's not talk about the welcome back party that I give our troops after coming back from the war. Most of them wall up homeless and poor. They never get re-acclimated back into society, shoot them up, drug them up, sing a song, fold a flag while the party rockers sit back in jet lag. And before long, we act like nothing went wrong. Point the finger at everybody else, but the truth is, we don't really love ourselves. Second to last, but never the least, I want to give out to shout out to those busy pedophiles. I hate those nasty beasts. Turning smiles into frowns like snakes crawling on the ground. Say you hear kitty kitty that call, Lacy maybe Michael said it is before they can even crawl. Stealing hope from between their thighs. Excuse me? Were you surprised? It's no wonder the kids have ADD, but they blame it all on me. Fathers getting high on heroin, playing Fifty Shades of Grey with their daughters and sons instead of coloring them with crayons. And don't get me started about domestic violence. Husband put wires in a truck hole? One hit for me, and that's the way love goes. Before long, I have you running from life in the wrong direction. You'll be seeking many forms for protection. I come in many forms, powder, liquid, and solid, just depends on how you want it. They call me China Girl, Jackpot, Purple Drink, and OC. But I love it when they call me White Lady. Well, I could go on and on. My list of credentials are so very long, all around the world it's the same old song. I've gotta run. It's been fun. If you need me, just call. But take my advice, you don't want none of this. Nope, not at all.
Jerry. Ladies and gentlemen, please put our hands together one more time for Jerry Ogden and the Changes Foundation. Her husband, a pro basketball player, is out there with her two kids. And through the Changes Foundation, she tries to address some of these social issues, and she does it in a very effective manner. So, thank you, Jerry. Thank you. Mr. Johnny Mac, I'd like for you to come and take your seat along with your friends, please. Now that they're seated, I guess I can say a few words. Johnny McMorro was elected to the Alabama Legislature in 1990. So he's been there quite a while. And many of us don't spend a lot of time in Montgomery, but there are some in the audience here who knows Johnny McMorro and what he does in the Alabama Legislature. So, I'd like to invite Mr. Ed Henry, State Rep from Hartsell, to say a few words about Mr. Johnny Mac. Come on, Ed.
I object.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Borah. I just, first off, I want to say thank you for inviting me to this. It is definitely an issue that faces not only our state, but our nation. And if we don't address it, it's gonna continue to grow, and it may, or may not, it already be out of control. But I appreciate the efforts of this type of environment. And one of the things I've noticed over the last several years in the legislature, there's a lot of people that talk about things, and then there's a few people who do try to solve the problems. And Johnny Mac, he and I may not agree on which side of the aisle to stand on, but we always agree on there's gotta be a way that we can solve these problems if we work together. And I appreciate Johnny McMorro's efforts over the last several years to bring all of the people that are smarter than we are together and try to solve an issue. And it just, when I heard about this the other day from Dr. Borah, I was very grateful. I knew that when I heard Senator Melson was gonna be on it, that we probably couldn't go too far astray. And Dr. Matthews, I've known him for quite some time from the Decatur area, so just thank y'all. And I want to commend my friend from the other side of the aisle, Representative Johnny McMorro, for putting this type of thing together. He does it in Montgomery, not only back home, but thank you for the time.
But we also have a few things to what Johnny Mac has done. As I said, he started out there in 1990. And one of the first projects that he ever worked on was the recruitment of Mercedes-Benz to Alabama. That was a very long and challenging journey, but they were eventually able to get Mercedes to open up shop in Alabama. That itself, folks, was a big game changer for all of us. People all over the world started to think, if Alabama is good for Mercedes, then it should be good for us too. You can now see the fruits of that effort. Alabama has become a hub for the automobile industry. I should also mention that Johnny Mac's the one who took the initiative to organize this town hall meeting, so that we as a community can be involved and stay engaged in this process. He believes that no amount of legislation at the state or at the federal level could have as much impact as the local communities. We have enjoyed working with Johnny Mac on his important initiative, and we hope that we can continue to work together and bring about some positive changes in our communities. So ladies and gentlemen, here's the man, Johnny McMorro, and I hand over today's proceedings, the rest of it, to the man. Thank you, Johnny Mac.
Thank you, Dr. Borah. Thank you, Ed, for those kind words. Ed and I have a very good relationship. We don't always vote alike, but we always work together on projects that we can come together on. And I appreciate very much you being here and being a part of this program. I also want to thank Jerry for that wonderful presentation. She actually has written that, prepared it, after I contacted her about eight or nine days ago. And it was on short notice, and she did a great job. And I also want to say this, if you're planning an activity in your town or your city where you're gonna have a town hall maybe for opioid discussions, Jerry would be available, is that correct? And you can contact her at jraglandchanges@gmail.com. So if you're planning an event in your own city or your own county, give Jerry a call and she'd be glad to assist. I want to also thank President Kitts and Dr. Joey Borah, and other UNA officials, staff, students, everybody that has helped put this together. It's truly an amazing university. And the cooperative attitude that I've witnessed here in putting this town hall on has just been very encouraging to me. And I want to say thank you to all of the UNA community for their help. What has it been called? The opioid crisis? The opioid epidemic? The opioid national emergency? All of these have been used to describe where we are today. As President Kitts said, Governor Kay Ivey signed Executive Order 708, which established a 36-member opioid council. And we are fortunate, we are fortunate to have reached the three co-chairs here with us on this panel. Is that not remarkable? Sitting to my left are the three co-chairs of that council that Governor Benn has put together. The six panel member here, and by the way, we have three local experts also that are extremely qualified to address this issue with the three co-chairs from the opioid council. What the panel will do today is they will present ideas that they have about their role, or their agency's role, or whatever, within their area of expertise. This will be a very short presentation. And what we want to have on today is, the main purpose is to answer your question. So, we've got microphones here, there'll be one here and one over there. There'll be people who will have a mic, they'll come to where you're seated if you prefer. So, I want to encourage you to go to the microphone, raise your hand, and let's ask questions. So let me now introduce our panels, and if you will, just raise your hand. Attorney General Steve Marshall. Mental Health Commissioner Lynn Bashir. Acting State Health Officer Scott Harris. Senator Tim Melson. CEO at Riverbend, Brian Lieber. And Chair of UNA's Counseling Education Department, Gwen Pearson. Thank y'all for being here today. Steve, you and I have known each other for a long time. That's right. I guess our first association was back in the mid-nights when you came to work for Bob McCurley and Alabama Law Institute. Steve was actually a legislative analyst. And what he would do is, he would come down when we were in session and help us with our bills. He'd help us write bills and help us interpret legislation. So that was my first encounter with Steve. Then he was a law partner for a very close friend of mine, Representative Jefferson Loughlin. And then he became DA. The next time I saw Steve, Steve, you were working with us on the crystal meth legislation. That was something that you championed. And I remember as a result of that crystal meth legislation, we made people present driver's license if they wanted to purchase any of the ingredients that we used to make crystal meth. We put the ingredients behind the counter and created a database.
For reduced meth levels by how much?
Ninety years. Ninety percent reduction in meth levels. This guy right here has been working on these kinds of issues for a long time. And one other thing that I want to commend you on, I understand there's five parts of the coalition right now that you're working with, forty other states. Why don't you tell us what's at the coalition, this, 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 the manufacturers and distributors of these opioid products do?
That's a very different discussion about task force and the issues we're going forward. I think looking back on maybe why we even got there, if you look currently at where we are in this country, we consume 80% of the opioids that are manufactured. We consume in this country 80% of the opioids that are manufactured, yet we only have 5% of the world's population. Now, some of that can be attributed, Dr. Pearson, to be able to talk about it, about the fact that we have access to medical care here, and maybe it's a little bit different than others. But we truly have treated over a continuum now of time pain management differently in this country than we've seen in other places. And we've seen it manifest itself in a way that's gotten us here today. One of the things that we're doing, and again, it's separate apart from Alabama-specific issues, is the fact that we are investigating along with forty other states, manufacturing distributors of this particular product. Number one, looking at how it was marketed to begin with to the medical community, about what they said and what they identified about possible addiction and how it ought to be prescribed. And then beyond that, there are certain requirements on the distributors of this medication, and to the extent that, for example, a certain pharmacy seems to be getting far more than otherwise you would expect, or that if you look at their history, that they're getting more than they have in the recent past, that's supposed to be notified to both law enforcement and other officials, and whether or not they're complying with that request. And so one of the things that we're doing is not necessarily accusing them of wrongdoing now, but instead requesting information, looking at what they've given us, looking at what we find from other places, to see whether or not there is potential liability and culpability there, so that we can recover potentially damages for the state of Alabama.
What you're really doing is asking them to become a helper and find solutions.
Absolutely. And if you think of it in a very different context, you know, we understand what happened in the world of tobacco, that there ultimately was a master settlement agreement that required the tobacco industry to change how they marketed their product, the disclosures that were contained on tobacco products, and also required them to provide funding to various states to help deal with the health consequences of those who decided to smoke. You know, there's a very similar effort potentially being looked at here with opioids to see whether or not we need to be able to have the manufacturers and distributors come to the table as part of the solution as opposed to being part of the problem.
Well, I want to thank you again for being proactive with issues facing our state. At this time, I'd like for you to discuss with our audience what you as our Attorney General, what do you see your role as on the council, and also in fighting this horrible, horrible thing we're facing?
One thing, and again, I'm a poor man's Chris Conley, if you want to know where I come from. And Chris is a remarkable DA here. I came from that environment. As a prosecutor, you see both from a law enforcement perspective and those that you're dealing and seeing that are subject to addiction, you kind of see the pull continue on the mall drug issues, but particularly what we're talking about here today. And so when I became AG, I already knew that this was a significant issue that we were dealing with in the state. One of the statistics that you're just talking about a lot is that Alabama is number one per capita in opioid prescriptions. I haven't gotten one last year, so Johnny must have two, right? And that's kind of what the averages are. And there's no real explanation for that. Maybe a couple of drivers, and that's one of the things on the task force we really want to try to find out, is maybe what is it that's causing that? Because we're not sicker than other people necessarily, we don't necessarily have more people that are injured per capita than others, but there's clearly something that is driving that, and that's one of the things that we want to be able to get a handle on. But I walked into the job frankly with a little bit of a sense of urgency about this, because you heard earlier the statistic about the number of people that are dying from overdoses. And part of that, y'all, is not just, we're talking about opiates, but let's go ahead and make sure that we're talking about heroin and fentanyl and carfentanil, because all of those are really wrapped up into this overall problem. And thinking about it a little different way, when I first heard this, it really struck me, is if we in this country are losing more people every three weeks to overdose than died on 9/11. And that really, when I thought about it in that way, you know, I saw as a country how obviously we were moved to that event. And the question is, are we moved in a similar way when now we know we're losing that many people every three weeks to this particular, what is, I think, a preventable problem being able to go forward? And so it's one of the reasons why, not long after Governor Ivey came on board, is I went to her and said, "We've got to do something about this." And it's not just a law and order, it's not a badges and guns problem, it's a mental health, it's a public health, and it's also a community issue that we've got to get engaged with. And it's why I'm real excited to be with Commissioner Bashir and Dr. Harris about what it is that we're gonna have a chance to do, because I looked around that room during our first meeting and saw an awful lot of talented people coming from very different perspectives, understanding that there is no silver bullet, there is no singular plan to be able to deal with this, because if so, you'd hear about it in a lot of other states, and they would have made an awful lot of progress. But yet, we're all trying to be able to grapple with how we deal with this going forward, and really from a couple of different perspectives. One of which is, can we make changes in law? You know, Johnny Mac talked about that issue with crystal meth earlier, where we leverage technology, a little bit of inconvenience on you in showing your driver's license, and again, made that dramatic effect on meth labs in our community. Now, it didn't eliminate crystal meth, but for those law enforcement officers who weren't worried about meth labs like we're having to on the cleanup side, but it could focus on that meth that was coming in from outside of our borders. We're hoping that there's a way to be able to do that here in a real way. But all four of those sort of legs of the stool, if you will, matter in what we're gonna be able to do going forward. Law enforcement has a role. And again, I come from that world, I understand exactly what we're dealing with. You know, we need to be proactive in finding the bad guys. I know that's very simple, but it's the reality. You know, you may have seen here within the last six weeks, nationally arrested over 400 doctors and medical providers in this country that were defrauding the system, but also primarily responsible for a lot of these drugs being on the streets. And we've seen significant arrests, we saw significant arrests in Alabama. For example, one doctor is forfeiting $4 million, they're gonna spend a lot of time in a federal prison as a result of this. We have a role on that front, making sure that we're looking for traffickers, we're gonna have some suggestions to deal with ways that law enforcement can get some additional tools from the legislature and maybe allow us to be more effective in that regard going forward. But the other thing, and I will tell you, it's a little bit of an urban legend. Y'all, our prisons are not full of addicts, because we've got a prison full of a lot of people, but they're mostly violent people. But yet, you may hear it, and maybe some of the other experts will be here to talk about it, in many cases, an arrest is the best thing that happens to somebody. You know, I've heard it described as a judicial intervention. And one of the things that Chris Conley does really well in your community is to be able to help feed a drug court that is truly changing lives. And so, one of the things that we have to make sure that we can do from the criminal justice side is acknowledge that addiction is not gonna go away by locking everybody up. And those that are truly addicts, we need to make sure through the criminal justice system, we can provide a mechanism not only to hold them accountable, but to make sure that we've got the opportunity to allow them to be successful. Because one of the things that we've seen from our end is if I can get you fully employed and clean for a year, then I'm probably not gonna see you back as if somebody otherwise hadn't gone through a similar program. And so, we need to be able to encourage and foster those around the states, because not just with this particular issue, but we got to make sure that we're doing it for other drugs as well. And beyond that, I got to make sure that my law enforcement officers are safe. Because I will tell you, that those who wear a badge and a gun and every day come to work with their families not knowing if they're gonna come home, I don't know how you respect anybody more. And one of the things that this drug, particularly fentanyl, is doing is placing their lives in danger. And so one of the things that I'm a strong advocate for is to make sure that law enforcement has access to the lockstone. We'll hear a little bit about that today. To make sure if they just simply come into a situation where they may touch fentanyl, that they're, otherwise their life could be at risk, and they need a lockstone to make sure that they can reverse those effects. And so, law enforcement has a vital function here, and we're ready to play that role, and that's really a voice that I get to be able to pronounce. But also one thing that we recognize is, is there are other partnerships and other disciplines that are far more effective in dealing with the problems rather than us seeing them on the back end after they're subject to addiction. I am excited about what we're gonna be able to have an opportunity to be able to do. One of the things that we've been given the charge is to make sure by December 31st that we give Governor Ivey a plan going forward. People like Johnny Mac and Ed are gonna have an opportunity in the legislative session to deal with some policy changes as well as some law changes that may be able to help us. But here's also some good news that we can tell you, is that we learned that if you look at the rate in which opioids have been prescribed, which was going up for a long time in Alabama, that trend is now coming down. And I think that's probably for a couple of reasons, and maybe we'll get into it here in a little bit. But yet, we know that the problem still exists. We had Blue Cross give us data recently about plans that they particularly administer, not the ones that are self-insured, and they talk about chronic opioid users. not the ones that are self-insured, and they talk about chronic opioid users being one in four of the folks that they insure. I mean, that's a significant question. And where that matters, is not only on those lives, but they're thirty-three percent more likely to have an ER visit than somebody who's not a chronic user, and sixty-six percent more likely to be in a hospital than somebody who's not. That's a fiscal cost to the general fund that y'all potentially are having to deal with. And so we see it not only affecting the lives of those who suffer addiction, but we see it generally a cost to the state of Alabama from resources that otherwise limited, that it's affecting us daily. So there is hope, I want to make sure that we say that before we leave, because I have had so many people, and one of the privileges of the job that I have, is that randomly people will come up to me on the street and tell me their story of recovery. And I can tell you, there's nothing more reaffirming than knowing somebody who, for whatever reason, made the decision to get help, was able to get help, and they weren't one of those stories of tragedy that we also know takes place. And so, y'all, thank you for coming out tonight to be able to listen to this, and I do think we'll be able to talk about some substantive issues going forward.
Thank you, Steve. Wouldn't y'all agree with me that our Attorney General's office is in good hands? Lynn, welcome to Florence. I called out in Montgomery, and I tried to find out some things about Lynn we've never met before just now. And I talked to a mutual friend of ours, and I'm not going to tell you that was on the microphone, but I will later. I said, "Tell me about Lynn." And she said, "Well, I'll tell you one thing," she says, "She's been focused on mental health for some time, and for years, and she understands the issues, the needs, and the gaps in services." And she said, "I guarantee that she will come up with a strategic plan that will move mental health forward in Alabama." So, you know, Lynn is our new mental health commissioner. I want to welcome you on board as being our new commissioner, and also welcome you again to UNA in Florence. And I'm sure there's some things that you have planned in your department that is going to impact this issue that we debated tonight. And I'd like for you to just say hello to these folks and tell us what's on the line.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Is this on? Is this on for showing us that one? This is all awkward hitting at any point. Sorry. Hi. Hi, you're welcome. Yes, I want to know who that is. Sounds like I need to send flowers or something. You know, it's very interesting that I would be here in this particular position at this time, because it really is an exciting time, despite the crisis that we have. I am so excited to be able to work with these two professionals here, our Attorney General and our State Health Officer. And I, like you, Steve, when I looked around that room, what, two weeks together, I could not believe the caliber of people. I'm just telling you right now, as your mental health commissioner, if that group can't come up with solutions, there are not solutions to be found. So I can promise our legislators that this group of people is going to come to you with some solid ideas. Let me just tell you a little bit about myself. Oh, boy, I keep doing that. I'm a nurse, that's my training. My first job offer interestingly, and ironically, was in psychiatry at Duke Medical Center. I had just turned twenty-one, not too long before that, and had applied for a job at Duke, I'm from Durham, and chose not to go into psychiatry at that point, because at twenty-one, I just felt that I was not ready for Duke University psychiatry. A couple of years later, I had a patient who worked in a small psych unit at Virginia Beach General Hospital, when I was living in that area, where I did shock treatment. I held paddles, one of the psychiatrists flipped the switch, and we did shock treatment for people with severe depression. My training in psychiatry, when I was in nursing school, was at the Dorothy Addicks Mental Hospital in Marlin, North Carolina. You may remember that Dorothy Addicks was the founder of the movement around mental illness in this country, and actually approached Dr. Peter Brys down there in Tuscaloosa, who built the first mental hospital. So for me to be in this position at this time feels right to me. It really does. We had been working to create a system of mental health care in the River Region, and apparently the governor heard about that, and called, had one of her staff call my office, and invited me to come and talk to her about the work we had done. She said she wanted me to come and work on this issue. So I could not be more excited. Now, I like to collect newspaper articles. I might be the only person in America that still reads a newspaper.
Go ahead.
I had a patient to speak last week to leadership of Gomri, and the headline in the newspaper the next day, I'm in the whole of it, it says, "Bashir says that mental illness is a disease." Now, why would mental illness is a disease need to be the headline? Don't we already know that? Unfortunately, in this country, unfortunately, in this country, we have regarded mental illness as a character flaw, as a weakness, a person came from a family, or any other number of circumstances. But mental illness is a disease, and so is opioid use disorder. And I was shocked a couple of days ago to read in a textbook that between forty and sixty percent of the vulnerability of being addicted to becoming addicted is genetic. Now, I want to show you another newspaper article that will break your heart. This young woman right here, this very attractive young woman right here, was a counselor in a methadone clinic, I think in Clanton, or somewhere between Montgomery and Birmingham. And her whole job and life was to work with people who had been addicted to opioids, or heroin, or cocaine, or any other of these substances that require methadone treatment. And she decided that she would take one hit of heroin, just to see if she could develop a clearer understanding of what her patients were going through. With one dose of heroin, this woman became instantly addicted. She left her family, her child, her husband, her job, she lost her home, and she lost her life on July the 31st. She was buried in a paupers and large grave. That's what these medications and these drugs do. So don't for a moment think that mental illness and opioid addiction are not diseases of the brain. You must approach them the way you would approach treatment for any other disease. I'm going to leave the science here to my speech colleague, Dr. Scott Harris. When it's his turn to speak, I will tell you that I am completely committed to this issue. I'm completely committed to understanding that the only behavior you can change is your own. So if we want people to behave differently, we have to ask themselves, what do we need to do differently? Okay? And then also, I think you said earlier, you made a statement about healthcare being local. Did I hear that, or the gentleman?
I was saying that if we wanted to have these town hall meetings locally in counties or cities, that we could put together our local group of panel members that could do that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, here's what I say, that's a great segue with that, is that healthcare is local. People are not receiving their healthcare up there on the outskirts of the Capitol, or the mental health department, or the state health department. They are receiving their healthcare where they live. And so we have to engage the local community. And in fact, on our opioid task force, or council, we just created a new subgroup, and it had its first kickoff meeting yesterday, which was a terrific meeting. And we're calling it Community Engagement. Okay? And so we are excited about the opportunities that are going to come out of that subcommittee, as small as the other six, that can help us come up with a package to address this crisis. So thank you for taking your time out to be here, and I look forward to participating with the other members of the panel.
Talking on, you and I have talked several times on the phone, but today's actually the first day we met. Scott's over in Catering, he's a new health officer for the state, and we're happy to have you on board. I noticed a quote that you had made recently, and you were quoted saying, "This is the biggest health problem that we're facing at this time in this country." Would you like to explain that?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for having us, first of all, I really appreciate that. Sometimes in public health, we get often into talking about numbers all the time and statistics, and you can kind of lose track of the actual lives of people that you're talking about. But the numbers really are amazing to consider. You know, we have about a hundred and fifty people a day in our country that are dying from overdose overdoses. Every day, today, a hundred and fifty people. And about two-thirds of those people are going to be due to, two-thirds of those deaths are going to be due to opioids. So around a hundred people a day are dying from opioids, and that's just an amazing number to comprehend. Opioid deaths or the overdose deaths are the leading cause of deaths for people in their age fifty in our country, which is just startling to think about. More people are dying from these drugs than are dying in automobile accidents in our country. More people are dying that are dying from guns. You know, we think of younger people as dying from accidents or violence, and they do. But more people are actually dying from opioid and other overdoses than are from violence or from automobile accidents. So it's just an astounding scale, and it's just hard to wrap your mind around how big a problem it is. I have told this story before, or somebody have heard this, but you know, my background was infectious disease. I trained, you know, back in the eighties, and at the time, I trained doing HIV care. And when we saw those patients with HIV in the eighties and nineties, we had absolutely nothing to offer those people. You know, we diagnosed them, and then we told them to get their affairs in order. We gave them comfort care. And there was nothing we could do, and the number of deaths we saw was just, you know, almost made me want to choose a different profession. And as bad as that was, and it was, the pace we're seeing with opioid deaths is going to pass that. We're seeing rates of people dying from opioids is even faster than we saw with HIV, when there was no treatment. And opioid deaths are completely preventable deaths. I mean, they're all completely preventable deaths, and yet we're seeing the scale of this. So when I thought about what we wanted to talk about today, I know we're going to have this interactive portion that I'm really looking forward to, and we're going to get to ask questions. And what I would ask you all to think, or what I would like for you to have, is to leave today with sort of three things clear in your mind. I hope you get that, and I hope you'll think about the questions you're going to ask. I want you to be clear about just how bad a problem this is, that we need to understand the scale of it, and why it's so important. And then secondly, I want to be sure we do a good job of you understanding what your state agencies are doing, what your elected leaders are doing, and how we're trying to address that. And really finally, the most important thing is, I want you to leave knowing something that you yourself are going to do to try to address this problem, because that's the only way that it's going to happen. Commissioner Bashir mentioned the Community Engagement Committee, and didn't take credit for it. That's her idea, and she deserves credit for that, because that was, it's a wonderful thing. The only way we're going to address this problem is through everybody in our community pulling together and recognizing what a problem this is. We can talk, and we can, you know, issue policies, and we can write editorials, and those are good things. But it's going to have to come from people in our communities understanding this scope of death. No matter where we go and talk, it's sometimes surprising when people act like they don't know about the problem, or haven't thought about the problem. And I know that we just haven't gotten the message out in some cases, but I know there's also cases in which people are just unwilling to admit that the problem is very close to them. You know, there's still so much stigma associated with drug use, and we have to get past the idea that it's just a bad choice, or it's some moral failing. We have to get to the point where we see this as an illness that we would treat like any other illness. And I hope that you will recognize that today and take that away. Now, much of the problem that's going on is due to people like me, is due to physicians. We clearly got a big role in this. And opioid addiction is a little different from some other addictions, in that a whole lot of it is perfectly legal. You know, you go see a physician, you get a prescription, you get a refill, and yet you have this addiction problem. Now, a lot of it's not legal, but a lot of it is. And so it's kind of a unique problem in a way compared to, you know, cocaine use, for example, or to methamphetamine use. This is a problem that sort of got created because people got prescribed drugs by well-meaning physicians who were doing what they thought they were supposed to do. And so the only way we're going to get a handle on this is by regaining physicians about what they should be doing, by giving them knowledge and information that allows them to make good decisions when they see a patient. And it's also going to require patients understanding what their expectations ought to realistically be. You know, patients, you know, probably shouldn't expect to have zero pain ever for any situation. Patients need to learn to work with their physicians to understand what's appropriate, which keeps them from being at risk for getting addicted, and yet still takes care of them. So these are not easy issues, there are a lot of different aspects to that. One other thing that I want to mention that you're going to hear more about today, is the use of the narcotic reversal drug, which is called naloxone, or sometimes called Narcan by the trade name. This is a drug that can be given to someone who's overdosed, and can literally save their life in just a matter of seconds or minutes. When people overdose on opioids, essentially what happens is eventually they stop breathing. And when this drug is given to someone, it reverses that action in just a few minutes. I'm surprised how many people don't know about this drug, but we're doing our best along with mental health, and with the VA Association, and many other agencies, trying to get this drug out there. For people who are using narcotics chronically, because you have a chronic pain problem, you need to have this in your house, okay? You need to go to the drugstore and get it. And in fact, you can get it now by printing off a prescription from the website at the Health Department. You don't need to see a physician even. You can go print it off, take it to your drugstore, and get this reversal drug. If you have someone in your family who's using drugs legally or not, you ought to have this in your home. And you need to go and get this and have it available if you need it. So there are many things like this that we want to talk to you about today. There's no one easy solution, as the Attorney General said, it's not going to be simple. There are going to be a hundred little things that we're going to try to do, and some big things too, and all of them are going to address as a part of this problem. But the main issue is that you all become engaged with this, that you understand how important it is, you understand what it is doing, but also I want you to understand what you all can do yourself. And if I may, Representative Moore, I do want to recognize our local health officer, Dr. Erin Landers, and she's in the audience and came here today. She's been a health officer here for many years. And you're the great leader. She's been here for many years, she was very kind to come today, and I just wanted to point out, she's here as well.
Well, that's what I was speaking a few minutes ago. If you're in the audience, you'd like to put together a town hall similar to this in your town or your county, I'm sure Dr. Landers would be on the panel, and we can put together a panel in any city or any county or in this area. So let's all think about that. Tim, I want to take a little moment here to, I guess, a point of personal privilege to just tell you, in this, take this opportunity to tell you how much I enjoy serving with you, and how much I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Senator Tim Nelson, and I have proven that Republicans and Democrats can work together. I have a lot of respect for Tim. Tim is a physician and a legislator, and I think, really, Tim, I think you're in a unique position to understand the opioid crisis perhaps better than anyone up here. You're not only looking at it from a, established from a policy side, but also you're a physician, you know, so would you like to?
Sure. First of all, Steve did mention it, but I know he is very active in child endangerment. First of all, Steve did mention it, but I know he is very active in child endangerment. I just wanted to bring that out, that we hadn't brought that up. You know, narcotics just don't always affect just the individual, but also other situations with offspring. You see a child coming out of withdrawal from some med or something or worse, it's a terrible view. But, I know you were very active in Marshall County with the Met Lab and that was a great cause that you participated in. I just wanted to bring that out. A little bit about myself as far as the view from both sides. I actually do research for a lot of drug companies. I've done both narcotics and non-narcotics, narcotic alternatives. So, some of the things that you're going to see in the future are highly selective opioids such as capaginist instead of going to all the receptors that give you the euphoria, the respiratory depression. So, that's on the outlook. I wasn't being rude while I was texting a minute ago, I had a patient in the hospital on trial right now and I had to give some orders. But, you see that in the future, there'll hopefully be other alternatives that won't solve the problem, but it will decrease the chance of dependence while being in the hospital. And then also some other things I want to bring up that you'll see in the future are probably more nostril oil selective. You'll see them in the form of patches over affected areas and so, you get positive feedback when you give those to patients because they actually see the device on them and they don't think about when's that next pill coming. They're thinking they have treatment ongoing at the same time and you're starting to see a lot of highly selective opiate inhibitors, drugs like that. And that's a bright future. I know we keep hearing pain and problems and dependence and one of the things that we know is that the longer they stay in the hospital, the younger they get treatment as far as with narcotics after surgery and things like that can trigger situations where they become long-term dependents of narcotics. So, what we're seeing is now is that it's better to use multimodality therapy, using combinations with less narcotics. So, hopefully we don't trigger the urge in the brain, so to speak. And so, you know, that sort of thing's going on. Also, you know, we're seeing long-acting local anesthetics. We're seeing nerve blocks with, I don't want to get, I want to keep it down at the university level, but not too far advanced, but there's encapsulated with certain medicines that break down over time. And so, we're doing nerve blocks for surgeries. One of the greatest risk of a surgery is a totenine. That's very high on the list and well, there's thoracitis and things like that. So, we're seeing patients now getting 120 hours with pain relief. So, they usually can get by just with that as far as not having to worry about narcotics, just take some extra Tylenol whether in the hospital, IV, acetaminophen. So, there's been some breakthroughs because this is definitely a major problem right now. And then, you know, we mentioned want to go, or you mentioned want to go about naloxone, Narcan, as we call it commonly. You know, we had talked about this a little bit backstage. That's a drug that actually goes and competes for the receptors where the narcotics are going. So, it's more, has a higher affinity, so it's actually going to that and removing the narcotic. So, a lot of states like, I think Massachusetts, Florida, I think West Virginia really got a high problem. But, anyway, they're doing a O E N D project or OEN where it's opioid education and Narcan or naloxone distribution. And they're saying like for every 164 cases or packs that's distributed, saving at least one life. And that's a pretty good return on the investment there. And it's nasal, so it crosses, it's very lipid soluble, so you just, the family member injects it in the nose, crosses into the blood-brain barrier quite rapidly and quickly and it works quite well. Now, some people argue that you're not promoting, but you're saying there's, look, if you get this problem and you use the drug, it's no big deal, we just have a problem that'll stop it. But, as you know and I know, that there's no proof of that. It actually just gives family more security and creates a situation where there's probably a better, well, no doubt, a better outcome. But, you mentioned, that's kind of from the future coming up and things going on, but one thing, I'm glad to see all these nursing students here because what you're going to have to be on the where and look for is just like in families, is drug diversion problems. As you know, that you're going to see and there's a good chance, I hate to say it, but one of these members here will probably end up with a substance problem. And you need to be aware of what to look for and what to see and it's easy to divert in the hospital. But, one thing that is happening in the drug community is they're getting more technological, so they're giving fingerprints where only you can dispense your own medicine if you're a patient. You know, get some lingual medicines on the PCA or a patient-controlled analgesic and it'll give you your dose under the tongue or in some way, so there's less diversion. So, I'm just saying this thing to let you know that the medical community, the drug companies realize there's an issue out there. I think Pfizer settled for billions of dollars and Merck and some others because of the opioids. Was it Oxycontin that they settled on? I think so. And so, they realize they're getting, with more education, there's going to be more exposure to risk for them. So, it's going to be a problem seen on both sides, not only, I hate to stop there and just ask, there's a lot of people here, how many have actually had, if you got embarrassed or a problem, raise your hand. How many have dealt with a family member or another individual knowing somebody in the community that's had an overdose? Wow. Wow. That's pretty amazing. And so, we, you know, there's a problem, but like we've had Lynn said, it's a mental illness, there's no doubt. And you see spec scans of patients, brain imaging of patients who have no history of opioid abuse and then you see them afterwards and it's just such a deregulation, so to speak, of the brain, how it just kind of atrophies and withdraws and it's pretty amazing how it's so obvious that it's a mental condition, it's got long-term consequences and very difficult to reverse. So, if you have this situation in your home or family, I think you're absolutely right. The prescription for Narcan's obviously imperative that you have it around if you want to, you know, have that security of doing it. I think there's a bright future in the drug field, that there's going to be more alternatives available, which will be something you should ask your physician or your doctor about and look for the alternatives. And then there's other programs, you know, we haven't talked about is, one of them is the returning your unused prescriptions because some family member will find them and pick them up and use them. And I won't ask you to raise your hand, but I'm sure some of us have been guilty of that at some point or another because you get a headache or some back pain and you don't want to go try Tylenol and it's just so easy to do. So, there's a program, a lot of people can turn in your communities, turn in your unused medicines and I think that's a program that should be increased. And then we've talked about other things in the back. We talked about naval exchange, you know. A lot of people have mixed emotion about that. Are you encouraging bad behavior or are you preventing a more costly experiment of getting Hep C or HIV or some other problem? And those are things that, you know, you have to weigh out when you're down in Montgomery taking a vote, when the new health director wants you to vote for that or the mental health director. So, you know, those are things that we all think about down there and it's important and it's a very serious condition. And I ramble on a little bit longer than you probably wish, Johnny Mac, so I'll be quiet now.
You're not rambling at all. Don't you think that as a member of the Senate, I certainly feel this way with the House members, that we'll be anxious to get this report and requests from this council that...
Oh, absolutely.
Y'all schedule a report December 31st.
And I think most people don't mind, you know, finding a lot of programs, but they don't mind being compassionate, they just want accountability.
Exactly.
You know, not only from the family, but they want it from the individual and I think that's one of the things you have to make sure to stop.
Brian, we are extremely fortunate to have River Bend in our area. What role do you see River Bend playing in addressing this issue?
Well, because I'm sitting here and listening to everybody and I have, you know, really, River Bend is a treatment provider. And that's really our role at this point in time. And I was sitting here, I was thinking actually back to the very first job that I had. This was in a different state and I won't blame the state and that, but it has to do with stigma and the way people view substance use and things. And that particular state had decided if somebody had a, was arrested for a drug problem and that rather than sentencing to the state penitentiary to serve a sentence and that, they literally sentenced them to the state mental health hospital and that to serve their sentence and that. And that's, it was a mental health issue, they needed to address it as a mental health issue and that. And we had individuals there that were serving anywhere from 90 days for possession of marijuana and 15 years for heroin, heroin. So, it was really kind of an interesting experience and I'm sitting here reflecting back on that, thinking about treatment and where we have come and where we have to go. Because the fact of the matter is, is that type of treatment and that was very ineffective, really not cost-effective in any way and really didn't help a whole lot of folks and that, that we go on. And I think the issue is, is when you start looking at treatment and you start looking at people getting help and how do you get people help? You know, one of the things in that that we have to recognize and particularly with the opioids and all this, this has been around for a long time. We talk about it being a crisis now, but there were opioid deaths years and years and years ago, you know? Then you have the snake oil salesmen and there are lixers and that that had narcotics in those snake oil sellers, lixers and that, they were selling that. Then we come up to World War II and look at the advances and that and really began having a morphine issue and that with people and through that, through the Great War and that and ended up with a lot of individuals addicted to morphine and that. And then somehow we got out of that and then in the sixties and that, there were, in the seventies and that, we were into heroin and that. And now we're down to it and that where we're coming back out again. But, it's been mentioned here, a lot of what's coming on now is through the medical profession and it's through prescription medications and that are going on. And one of the things in that that I think, you know, sort of like if I was king and I can change it all and make it all different and that, one of the first things I get rid of all these commercials and that that says, "Ask your doctor about it." You know, because you get individuals and that, that basically come in and they start putting their pressure on their physician and that, saying, "This is what I need." And doctors try and say, "No, you really need this and no, I'm not taking on something else." And physicians are human as well, they're going to wear down and that over a period of time. And then they may be prescribed one of these medications and that are going on. Then what they start doing is they start having some issues with it and some side effects of it, particularly with anxiety and those types of things. So, then we start adding benzoididates, Pings to it and that's trying to address that and complicate the issue. And so, we have a lot of other things. And the reason I raise all of that is because when I think of this as a treatment provider, I really don't look at a single drug. It's really multiple drugs and that who we're dealing with. You know, very few people in that, you know, back, you know, it used to be there was AA and Alcoholics Anonymous and that was good and you were alcoholic and that was what you did. And we're talking earlier backstage and that about how even today, some of those programs and that, if you're using any other medication and that, you really don't need to be in those meetings and that, which really isn't very effective for folks to be able to do. You want to be able to take it and reach the person where they're at and what they're able to help. And so, I think reaching out and understanding where we've been, this isn't new, but how we approach it needs to change. And we need to constantly evolve as far as how we're doing it. And I think we are doing that in a lot of different ways. It used to be that if you were going to go to treatment for substance use problem, you were going to the hospital and you were going to be there minimum of 30 days and in most cases and that. When I started in this, it was 90 days, you were going to be in a hospital and that, which made no sense whatsoever. And the idea of someone getting outpatient services or outpatient treatment of any sort, in today, we're in a world and that where we have medicated and assisted treatments and that, where there's some medications and that, that will help an individual and that be able to get off of some of these medications and that, through use of other medications and that. But, I think the key word that often gets missed in that is the assisted part. Because it's not just the medication that's going to treat the person, but they also need assistance because there are other issues as far as lifestyle changes and other issues and coping skills and that, that people need to be able to develop and help. And naturally, what we do as treatment providers is try and address a lot of those issues because you've got to make some changes. Somebody mentioned here earlier and that, you know, there's some great pain, it may be there. And how are you going to cope with it? How are you going to live with it? You may not be able to eliminate it, you need to be able to develop some skills and that to be able to learn how to be able to manage it in some way and that. And so, that's why we're trying to provide the individuals and that with that opportunity. And we may be able to do that individually and that, may be able to do it through group, you know. You know, I certainly believe primarily in that, that abstinence-based programs are, you know, probably one of the stronger things and that, but they're not the only thing. And I think we get walked into saying, "This is what it has to be and if it's not this," going on. And then you look at, how do you get people help and what is it? And quite frankly, in that, you get people help and that through coercion. There's very rarely does somebody wake up one morning and say, "I have a problem and I need to go get some help." You know? If you look at why people get treatment and seek treatment and that, because somebody's pushing someplace. You know, it may be the law enforcement that's pushing them, you know? It can be family. It can be the employer that's pushing them, you know? And more and more, it's the physician that's pushing them, saying, "You need to do something about this, this has gone beyond what I can do with the individual and that." And so, hopefully, once the individual gets engaged in that, they'll be kind of recognizing that is exactly what's happening with their substance use and what's going on with it and then they'll be able to recognize and that, "Yeah, I do need to make some changes of some sort and learn how some better skills and that." And so, I think in the provision of services and that's what's really important. The question is, is how do you provide those services? You know? And one of those things in that comes back, we are the public system. River Bend is the community mental health center and that. And looking at the numbers that we have over the past two years and that, we served almost 5,000 or 500 individuals and that who had a diagnosis, an opioid diagnosis, you know? But, two-thirds of them in that had no insurance, you know, going on. And these are people that probably are what they're working for, they're construction workers, they may be working fast food, they may be working someplace, they got jobs and that, they just don't have benefits to be able to do it. And so, when you look at those individuals of where it's going to be able to get to and how are we going to be able to fund them? So, as a community and a society, we need to decide, "How do we fund services?" And that's a major issue that we face and dealing with. But, I think the thing is, is to try and educate. River Bend, we have a prevention program and we try to do a lot as far as going out and doing a lot of education, particularly within the schools and working with them to give individuals information and that. We're fortunate in that through the Department of Mental Health at Sampson and that, is our prevention services and that, got additional funding this year and that to be able to expand some of our prevention services to focus on the issue of opioids. And that's really important that we be able to do those types of things and that. But, it's always a struggle to be able to do and to work with and it's been set up here. It is an illness, you know? And we tend to often want to view it as a moral issue and as a failing of an individual and that, rather than looking at, "How can I reach out to this person and that and provide the services that they need?"
Thank you. Lynn, you're the, you and I represented on the panel tonight and of course, you're the one that's going to supply us with professional counselors that's going to work with these individuals. And we appreciate the role that you play. Could you expand on how your department is prepared to work to help us solve this issue?
Sure. I think also, in addition to our department, counselor vacation, where we train counselors and we also have several departments on the campus that are involved in multiple layers that really are involved to address this problem. Departments like psychology and nursing and sociologic and sociology and of course, counseling. And I may be leaving some out because just the general aspect of education is key and tying into some of what others have said, we look at multiple factors of whether it's counseling students and even counseling professionals, but education, prevention, advocacy and treatment and so many levels along that line where we can make an impact. And education being one of the first pieces here that we're talking about and this notion that, and I, that all addictions are diseases of the brain that are addressed well in multiple ways, if we look at the multiple ways that we can address them. And so, there is that moral aspect because people can come to counseling and then they go back into the communities. And people ask things like, "What's wrong with you? Why don't you do better? Why don't you quit?" Or, you know, "Call him a bad person." So, what we need to, I was watching a national presentation on this topic today and one speaker said, "It's so key that in helping people with addiction, we're not trying to help bad people become good people. We're trying to help people with sickness become well." And so, the stigma, the stigma is so tremendous and so shame-producing. And again, yes, we're talking about opiates, but all the addictions that, as Brian said, we become concerned about different addictions at different times. we become concerned about different addictions at different times. I remember the crack epidemic in the eighties. And so access and stigma is one key problem to access. But access to affordable and available services. I was talking with a director of one of the addiction providers in the area and in the state, who said addicts aren't patient. When they're ready for help, they need help. And so access becomes part of the issue. I have a sad personal story and I have a happy one and I'll start with a sad one. One of my brothers took his life because he was too weak to overcome his alcohol dependence. Too weak. So stigma, lack of access, trying to be strong. But I'll end with a happy story. And so when we think about access, and that's what I'm hearing our state is trying to do and access within the lock zone to save lives, trying to have cooperation so that we have not only medically assisted approaches, which are really only available right now, FDA approved for things like tobacco and alcohol and opiates. And we don't have good ones for other kinds of drugs. And so this access becomes a tremendous key and a matter of funding. So the question is, can we afford it? And one government publication I was reading suggested that for every $1 spent in treatment, $47 are saved in criminal justice costs, other drug related crimes and theft and things like that. So the question is, we say, "Can we afford it?" But the real question is, "How can we not afford it?"
Lynn, I'd like to ask one question. Is counseling an area, a major that students are being drawn to? Do you see an increase or a decrease in people majoring in counseling?
We're, like many other professions, to some degree, the market for jobs, in addition to people being drawn for personal reasons and wanting to help, does impact people going into counseling programs and other mental health programs. So right now we are seeing an increase as more payer sources are available for addictions in particular, that that is increasing some of the interest. And when we, when we look at treatment, we also need to back up and look a bit at prevention. And there are counseling approaches and other approaches that are alternatives to opiates for pain management. And the question is, to what degree are they paid for? Things like cognitive behavioral therapy that involve mindfulness based stress reduction, relaxation techniques, other approaches like acupuncture, how these enter into prevention. And I want to add to this notion of what makes people vulnerable to addiction. Obviously genetic components, we're finding out more about that. And adverse child experiences, we're more aware of trauma informed approaches to counseling. And so when we look at addiction, and again, we want to blame the person who's addicted. And I borrow this from someone at this earlier presentation who said, "You know, instead of asking someone who's addicted, 'What's wrong with you?'" And one of the more appropriate questions is, "What happened to you?"
Hopefully we can come to the part of our program now where audience participation, and I said I want to encourage you to participate. We have microphones on both sides. We have someone available that can bring the mic to you. So let's get those hands up.
Chris, my guy. Y'all may be aware, last week CBS announced a new policy for them, which was they're going to restrict what they were going to issue on opioids to seven days. And it kind of reminds me a little bit, Chris and I were working on this problem with fentanyl and pseudoephedrine meth labs. Part of a policy question for us was, do we go to prescription only for fentanyl and pseudoephedrine? So if you wanted to get that drug for an allergy, you'd have to literally go to the doctor and get a prescription. That was what our friends over in Mississippi decided to do. A DA in this area was worried potentially about somebody crossing an Alabam, who did something differently, when that could be more of a problem. Ultimately, we made the decision here in the state that just showing your ID potentially be enough without adding that additional cost for somebody who would get an allergy medicine. And so it was literally a policy question of, "How much do you infringe on people's rights and costs versus ways to be able to help solve a problem that exists?" And I think we made a good choice there and we've seen the success for that. We've seen some states kind of do what CBS is doing by statute and restricting the length of time you get opioid. I'm just curious, what did you think about the CBS policy? And do you think that is a good practice for private industry to try to help us with this?
That's a great question. That's a great question. I think it is a good policy. There are different states that have tried variations of that and some of them limit pills, for example, only to a new customer or with a first time prescription, you know, somewhere they're unaware of. All of those policies tend to exempt, you know, cancer patients, people with active cancer, of course, people that have, you know, obvious reason they need to be chronic, usually with opioids. And so I think that, you know, the difficulty is always in the details and just ironing it out. How do you protect people who need the medication and have legitimate reasons and so that, you know, restrict it from them and, like you said, give them added costs and so on? And then how do you, and yet at the same time, implement this to keep people from abusing it? So, you know, pharmacies have to be involved in that decision. They're the ones that are going to be telling customers, "You only get seven days no matter what your doctor wrote." And so we've got to bring them in on those decisions too. But I support that and I think that's a great idea.
Attorney General question. As far as reporting, and you can answer that too, we don't reciprocate with other states as far as prescription reporting at all.
Does some agree with you?
We are now because I knew border counties have a problem with people coming in or going across to other, and I don't think, I didn't think we were. I think the medical board did require.
One of the things that you may or may not be aware of is, we have a database that is available to physicians and doctors, pharmacists and law enforcement to a lesser extent, that allows your prescribing history to be known to those individuals. It's a good thing so that, you know, that if somebody's an addict and they go to the ER complaining of deep pain and get 30 days of hydrocodone, show up the next day at another place complaining of back pain and they get another opioid prescription, that we see that can identify potentially somebody that's addicted. And so part of what is changing right now is the requirements on doctors to be able to look at that database. But here's what is concerning is you want that data to be almost real time and you want it to be active. And one example we've learned kind of just by chance is the fact that it's not always that way with our neighboring states. You're giving data freely to our neighbors, but for example, down in the wire grass, Florida didn't give us their data. And so I actually went to Washington DC here about four months ago to meet with the Trump administration and say, "What is your plan with national task force going forward?" And shared with them the simple concern is it ought to be universal that we get access to neighboring state's data. They weren't even aware that was going on. And so I think that is something, Tim, that's troubling right now, but we need to get fixed. The other thing for me, looking from the law enforcement perspective, is that law enforcement has less access to that than I think that they should. And that's partly what we'll discuss from a policy perspective, because if we're investigating those cases and trying to find the bad docs, for us to be able to see that data, I think helps us to do our job better. It's one of the reasons, again, why on that issue of meth labs, we were affected because law enforcement seeing real time, that backdoor data of those who are going out buying a fentanyl and pseudoephedrine for bad reasons. It was called smirking, by the way, that's your little known factor. But those were smirking, we were able to identify them quickly and law enforcement having access to what's called INPLEX was something allowed us to be helpful. And I think that's one reason that we were successful in that fund as well. I think our PDMP being valid, real time and accessible is something else that's important. The other thing for me about PDMP, again, this is just coming from me, you know, this, the opinions are solely the AG, not anybody else on the commission, is that I think we've ultimately got to find a way, because we have additional requirements on doctors, to say, "If you're going to prescribe fentanyl at a certain morphine equivalent, you've got to check with PDMP to look at the patient's prescribing history." We need to find a way to make sure, to audit the doctors doing that. So that we just don't have people that are showing up to the doctors that they know are going to give them that medication. Because I think that law enforcement will tell you that our addicts can tell us who the doctors are, where they're getting it, where they don't have to ask much, they can just give me a simple line, they can go, "Well, I'm allergic to Toradol." Well, folks have learned that Toradol was something they were getting and realized when they said they were allergic to it, that they wouldn't get that and get more of what they wanted. We got to make sure that when we place a requirement on our physicians, that they're doing what they're supposed to and looking at PDMP going forward.
On the seven day issue, which I think is great that CBS has taken that action. I'd be careful going on a legislation issue with it and that's because of insurance companies. Because basically what CBS is saying, we're only going to dispense this much at a time, which is fine. Most insurances will only pay for one prescription per month. And so if you get into legislating it and you're only going to legislate that they have to write a prescription for seven days and then try to get another one, they're not going to, the insurance company's not going to pay for the medication that they're in need of. So you start into a whole stupor slope. So it gets back into, again, as we address this as a society and that, as a society, physicians, pharmacies need to take some responsibility in how we're practicing what it is that we practice in dealing with that and because if you just look at what happened in the last legislature with the autism bill, dealing with insurance companies isn't a whole lot of fun, I don't think.
Questions from the audience. Okay. Could we get a microphone for this, Tim?
No, there is no microphone. Come on over here, please.
Okay.
To the front. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who we can get their hand up?
My name is Devires James. I'm a social work major here at UNA. And I know y'all were talking about earlier there being, you know, opioid, the opioid addiction and then alcoholism, they're kind of like diseases, they're not really a character flaw. But with that being said, I know in 1920 they had to warn alcohol and that was just like to kind of combat alcoholism. But they had to create an amendment, the Eighteenth Amendment, order to actually make that legal. So they had to warn alcohol. And you fast forward 50 years, they had to warn drugs, but there was no amendment. So I just had a couple of questions for that. I was going to see, you know, was it really legal for a government to make drugs illegal? And do you think it's legally effective for addicts? Or do you think we need to just make a whole nother new amendment to fight opioid addiction?
Stevie will take that.
I don't think we need an amendment to do it. I will say that, you know, obviously what we did in this country with prohibition was not very effective. And so we saw the need to be able to adopt that and to be able to move forward. I will tell you that I do think the fight on drugs is worthwhile. And one thing that I, I think law enforcement, especially when I talk to folks at DEA, for example, we try to identify, what is the reason why we're seeing this rise in heroin? You know, it obviously was around many years ago, long before you were born, but it's now much stronger than I think that we've ever seen it. And part of the question is, why? Well, when I talk to my law enforcement folks, what they tell me is that when states out west began to legalize marijuana so that we could allow for certain recreational use, that we basically reduced the cartel's business. And so what used to be marijuana fields across the border was, began to be poppy fields. And so what the cartel did was increase what they were doing in the manufacture of heroin, which did two things, made it cheaper, number one, and also made it more available because of the quantity that was there. And so one of the reasons why law enforcement talks about the rise of heroin is the fact that it is becoming a cheaper alternative to somebody who is otherwise addicted to pain medicine.
All right. And I also wanted to ask, what do you think the role of government is in all this with opioid addiction? You know, is there any legislation to make it better? Because I know war on drugs has been going on since the seventies, right? So, you know, what is like the true role of government in all this to really?
Tim, you want to take that?
He didn't understand the question.
So I was just asking, what was the role of government in fighting opioid addiction? And where are some things, some practicalities that the government can really do to combat it? Because I know there's legislation out there, I just haven't heard a whole lot about it.
You know, it's, it's one of the things everybody probably relies on government more than they do themselves, in my opinion. I mean, I think we form laws to help people, obviously, but I think you had a more of an education issue. You know, let people be informed of the consequences, the problems, let them know what's going on, help them make good decisions. You know, you look at the profile, it's people, also that we, when you talk about mental health, it's people who have either another mental problem going on like post traumatic stress disorder, they live in a less structured environment, they come from one parent home. There's other issues that we need to get concerned with just besides the government making rules and regs, because rules and regs are going to get broken. And, I mean, it's illegal, right? But there's a problem. So we got to do other things as far as make sure people are aware of the situation, also not with their own consequences, but also have other family members aware to look for, what to see, look for signs and symptoms. I remember when I first started practice and I had a partner that was showing it, next thing you know, you know, he's in rehab. So these things, you have to be aware of what to look for, what to see. And you can't just say, and you may do for states as far as rules and regs, but you enforce them, you don't make them. But if you did, what would you think would be a step? And we have, obviously, a big problem, but I don't see any law either strengthening or lessening that's going to make a major contribution. It's more of like getting them to early rehab and educating people as far as the, again, the consequences. Would you like to comment on that?
I don't disagree. I mean, I think Lynn Burchier can have more of an impact on this issue than we can from the law enforcement side. You know, in essence, law enforcement is a reactive agency. We like to be proactive. You've got a great chief and sheriff here that are very proactive in what they do in the communication. But basically, we respond to problems. One of the things that we see about mental health is they have the ability to be there on the front side. And so one of the things, I think you heard it collectively across, is one of the things I thought was interesting across the continuum. We got to remove the stigma of getting help. You know, if, for example, and y'all, I think a great example right now in society was, if you've seen the video of Tiger Woods. Tiger Woods was a traffic stop, barely could tell you who he was, couldn't stand up, obviously was impaired. People don't think of Tiger Woods and somebody like Tiger Woods being an actor, but think about his history. Chronic pain, multiple surgeries, multiple back injuries. He tested positive for two sleep medications, two pain medications and marijuana. He obviously was treating something. If Tiger Woods can have a problem, then a lot of other folks can have a problem. And it's why I really wish Tiger Woods would come up in now for his testing.
Devires, thank you. We'll move on to the questions to my right.
And TV, how they downplay the youth, you know, Breaking Bad, shows like that. We have a culture that finds that this is becoming more the norm and it's a shame because it's not, it's very risky.
Years ago, when I was working with Envision 2020 and we were going to roll out a task force dealing with crime drugs and public safety, that was about '03. And we went to meet with our police chief, John Wilson. And he said, "Lynn, I'll tell you how to prevent crime. This is the chief of police." He'd been in my leadership, my country class, so I knew him well. I said, "Well, John, please, as the police chief tell us..." He said, "Provide prenatal care." Exactly what this conversation is directing towards. We have got, there'll never be enough money, there'll be never be enough treatment. We have got to back up to the origin and what kinds of families our children are being moved into and what... And what behavior you can change your own. Remember that. So if you want people to behave differently, we have to ask ourselves, what do we as a society, as a community, need to do to ensure that children are born into homes prepared to take care of them? Now, you're not going to eradicate every problem with that, but you're going to go a long way in ensuring that children come into the world healthy and able to learn and not become victimized by poverty, by being victims of violence, or by witnessing violence, the PTSD that we mentioned. So I just, with all these social work and nursing students here, I just have to get them to plug for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
I'm Crystal DiBenedetto, I'm also a social work major. A question I have, the plan that you have for opioids, the restrictions, how will that affect other drugs like benzos for people that have mental illness? And is there a plan for that, or is that going to stay the same as it is?
Scott, is that your question? Say that again, I'm going to quote your understanding.
All right. The restrictions that you have plans for opioids, other drugs such as like benzos that people with mental illness take on a regular, are those going to be restricted as well? Or is it going to?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think there have been efforts to do that recently, actually, in the past year, in fact, and it's a really complicated issue, because there are, those drugs are so widely used. They're used in a lot of settings, like institutional settings, mental health in particular, but other places too. So there are no plans to do that at all. I mean, I think there was a lot of discussion last year, that's not going to happen now. I think we're concentrated on this particular opioid issue, but not on benzos or other agents. Now, there are clearly other drugs of abuse out there, and many of those are causing health problems too. But no, there's no plans to address those that I'm aware of.
The one thing that has changed in recent past relating to benzos is that's that toxic cocktail. Somebody's getting an opioid, they're going to get a benzo, add something else to it. Now, in looking at that PDMP that we talked about earlier, there is a requirement for doctors to be able to see, is somebody already prescribed a benzo before they get an opioid? So that they can help identify it there. So that's hopefully trying to help. Okay, over here, this is mine. That'll sing you off.
My name is Chasse Flint. I'm a social work student here at the University of North Alabama. I would like to discuss present day treatment solutions specifically for recovering opiate addicts.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you?
Can you hear me?
Maybe speak up.
Okay. As I said, I would like to discuss present day treatment solutions for specifically recovering opiate addicts. According to the Center for Addiction and Mental Health, methadone is a synthetic opioid. Do you truly believe that methadone centers are able to lead these individuals to a true path of sobriety?
I think I can speak to that. The question, the view about methadone has changed over time. There was a time, probably 10 to 15 years ago, where methadone was seen in a much more negative light by the mental health community. And still, perhaps, there's some controversy in some circles. But what we're beginning to look at is combination of medically assisted treatment, one aspect of which is methadone, and psychosocial approaches like counseling. That both of those need to be present, because you can help someone get clean, but if they don't learn to change their behavior, acquire some other coping skills, learn to reestablish some of their connections to the people in their lives and possible employment, that sobriety will not last. And so what we're learning, when we look at basically three medically assisted approaches, so there's methadone, there's Suboxone, and both of those are opiate-related medications. And then there's Naltrexone. And Naltrexone stops any opioid from having an effect when someone takes it. And so the Suboxone and methadone, some people say, "Well, isn't that replacing one addiction for another?" And there's not much controversy about Naltrexone, except the injectable form that lasts 30 days is $800. So what's different between, so people that take methadone and Suboxone are dependent on those substances. But when they're not addicted, addiction involves doing whatever it takes to get the drugs, regardless of the consequences, yourself, others who love you, everything. And so creating a substituting methadone or Suboxone for heroin or other opioids allows, it's a harm reduction model, not an abstinence model. And so the idea is to help them sort of reorienting, so they can live productive lives and not constantly chase a high, which really isn't a high, it's trying to feel normal. And so we have learned over time that some people have tried and failed, and tried and failed, and then you're done, when they, when the only model available is abstinence only.
Over here.
Yes, hello, my name is Julie Naubach, and I have two questions, but they're related. My first one is, for those that have just recently had surgery and they're told to stay ahead of the pain, how do you lessen the amount that you're going to take, or how do you recognize withdrawal symptoms, or potential withdrawal symptoms?
The question is, if you've just had surgery, is it, or just have acute pain? Was that the first?
Yeah, and you, like, for example, I have someone in my family who several years ago had knee surgery, she had knee replacement surgery, and she weaned herself off of it, she told me, but she could, she could see easily where she could have developed a dependence on it. So what medical advice or otherwise would you give to those trying to not possibly develop a dependence on it? And what do you do, or what do you look for when you begin to experience maybe with symptoms?
Yeah, in terms of acute pain, I think we're all learning, you know, differently now than we maybe got trained in the past, you know, how do we treat acute pain? And acute pain is a lot, you know, in some ways, a lot simpler to handle, you know, than people with chronic issues. Acute pain can be treated really well without using opioid drugs. And, you know, we, I guess, didn't always know that, or didn't always realize that. And there were, you know, companies marketing their products for acute pain, and many of us trained in an era when that's just reflexively what you did. And so clearly, many things can be managed with just tiny doses of opioids or none at all. And so that's, you know, I think we're beginning to realize that, but we have to re-educate, like I mentioned earlier, not just prescribers who are doing that, but we have to re-educate patients as well. You know, patients expect, you know, if they get their wisdom teeth out, they expect, you know, a narcotic, I mean, routinely. You know, so we have to re-educate all of us about that. And Singapore was about withdrawal.
I have another question. So to what extent do you think that changing policy in regards to paid medical leave, perhaps, could help with the opioid epidemic? For example, I have a friend who, she had recent knee surgery, and it looks like she's pretty much just going to have to deal with a certain amount of pain for a very long time. And she actually went back to work earlier than she really should have, because, you know, you have to pay the bills. So I'm thinking if we would have paid medical leave, this could help alleviate someone's financial situation. So can you guys speak to how a change in policy could potentially positively impact the opioid epidemic?
Paid leave, is that the, that's the question?
Yeah, or any?
That question right there, we could get into that and spend an entire day in that discussion. That's, I think, beyond what we want to be looking at here. Let's go over here and see if we have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow, and thank you as well, all, for being here. I'm a student at UNA, I'm a senior, my name is Hugo Dante. I was very intrigued by Mr. Marsha's comments. There's something in particular I found intriguing is that you were inquiring as to, what are some of the reasons that Alabama is one of the more, one of the more dependent states on opioids? Well, I'm glad to see that Dr. Pearson is here as a member of the panel, because her department does an excellent job in training up individuals to actually educate the public and help treat these problems. So you mentioned a lot of treating current drug users, but I feel personally as if education is also a problem. So what are some of the initiatives that you'll be taking alongside this town hall to actually educate the state of Alabama, to educate the public, and even college students in particular, and helping support us?
The first thing you ask is why Alabama? I'll give you an answer that maybe you don't hear very often. I don't know. I mean, it's just the truth. And part of it, and one of the groups that's working with our task force is the data committee, is that we don't necessarily have the greatest data that we can look at to see what that issue is. Because, you know, for example, to really answer your problem, we would almost have to take every medical record for every prescriber to know the basis on that prescription is written. And that's obviously not something that we can calculate or know. There's some very interesting theories out there that I won't even throw out, some of which have to do with medical insurance, type of medical insurance, and whether or not your medicine is free. But yet, the reality is, we don't know why. All we can hope to do is, from an education standpoint, like Dr. Miller talked about earlier, is, that goes down, and the number goes down as far as what we're doing out there. Beyond it, the second part of your question really goes to what Commissioner Breschier talked about earlier, is the community engagement piece, because that's really where the education component is going to come. Like, for example, I don't think you're going to see this task force mandate from the Department of Education, that you're going to spend two hours in a class one time a year with 10th graders to talk about this issue. Because candidly, I don't think that's very effective. And so one thing that we saw, for example, from the task force a couple of weeks ago, was from a group called Compact 2020 in Shelby County, a community now that is incredibly proactive in talking to parents and youth about this particular issue. And so one thing that we're going to try to encourage and talk about is, where do we think some folks are doing it well? And then how can we replicate that around the state? And so I really think it's the community piece there, Commissioner Breschier is really the big advocate for this, that's going to be the major part of not only awareness, but prevention side of the house. Question over here.
Yes, my name is Coleman Thompson, I'm in the counseling program at UNA. And based off the medical model, you know, medical model gets results very quickly. However, you prescribe opioids as a painkiller, that leads to the problem, because, you know, talking about the seven day law, if they can't get legal opioids, what are they going to turn to? Then obviously heroin. If heroin's off the street, then they're going to go to something else. I mean, it's not just that opioids is the only root problem. So that being said, and kind of what Dr. Pearson hit on, mental health can lead to physical symptoms too. Do you think the medical field within doctors, nurse practitioners, and our audience should start pushing for not only just a quick fix, but recommending going and seeking counseling services? Then let me ask this, are they? Are they recommending counseling services and not just opioids? Because it's a quick fix, and their problem is not a quick problem to address.
They are in painkiller situations and surgical situations, it's usually, and that I see is after more surgical patients, and so it gets out of my hand, and I don't see them that far out, but yes, I know in legitimate pain clinics, they use psychologists involved in him to help him out on COVID, you know, see if there's any other underlying condition.
For treating chronic pain, I mean, we know that opioids aren't the answer. I mean, you know, really, the only proven treatment, effective treatment for chronic pain is this whole multidisciplinary approach, which includes, you know, behavioral therapy, it includes sort of alternative things, you know, with, you know, whether it's physical therapy, depending on what the problem is, or, you know, people want to get into, you know, acupuncture and massage and weird things that insurance doesn't cover. But a multidisciplinary approach isn't the right answer for chronic pain, it's not opioid.
Mike on the left.
Yes, I just wanted to make a quick point. I lost my daughter, Juliana. She lost her struggle with mental illness in April. But she struggled with borderline personality disorder. And my question is, is there any funding research for mental illness that's increasing to help be really proactive in addressing the problem that we have? Because I think we look at, and I think in community engagement is going to be essential in combating the situation that we have now. But I think we also need to look at research funding for mental illness, because I don't think we're putting enough resources in that area. I just want to make that point.
Part of the struggle is there is a research evidence to practice gap. Some of what we know from research doesn't make it into practice. And likewise, on the other end, it's hard to get research done sometimes in actual practice, so there's a bit of practice to research gap. And hopefully, there are some creative solutions to improving that, that we haven't thought of, but the more pain is the society that we experience and so have events like this, perhaps it will trigger and instigate more incentive to collaborate in creative ways that where our, the funds that we do have might be used in a way that will translate into change in practice.
Sir, you have a question here?
Yes, I do. My name is Robert, and I was just wondering, are you guys going to be studying the coexisting illnesses theory along with the drug addiction that is being talked about here today? Will you have people doing that? Because, you know, with most drug addiction, there's also co-occurring illnesses that go along with it, anxiety, depression, and all the other things. Will you be having people study those things as well?
We treat it every day. I mean, it is good.
But surely the folks that we see have co-occurring issues in that and addressing that. Now, getting individuals on that to be able to recognize that and work with them on that, and particularly that when you have somebody with mental illness in that, and just heard about bipolar often, you'll see substance abuse as a self-medicating issue in that, with a bipolar disorder, in that it becomes problematic in that. But the other issue that you have is with individuals in that, that they'll be accepting of their mental illness, but they don't want to address in that that they may have an addiction issue in that as well. So it's a lot of work to try and getting an individual in that towards that level of acceptance. And with mental illness and substance abuse, both, it's working through, breaking through the denial. And that's the first part of treatment, is getting through that denial process.
Okay.
If I could address one other thing in that that was mentioned, just a question over here, a minute ago, just real quickly on that, is the issue in that we are hearing more and more about integrated care, which is mental health being involved with primary care, co-locating in offices, sharing space. So basically, where an individual goes to a doctor's office, they go right next door then to see somebody in that regarding their counseling services with that, rather than they have to go to a different location with a different appointment.
Okay. Rebecca.
Hello. My name is Lee Cox, and I am with Colbert County Juvenile Probation. This is probably a question for our legislators, but in my opinion, our opioid epidemic is draining our juvenile service resources and our DHR resources. Because children are coming into this world addicted to opiates, they're going into care, we don't have enough foster home beds, children are coming in my office hooked on opiates, I can't get them in placement quick enough, I'm putting them in detention, my detention costs are out the roof. Are there any legislative plans to help with DHR and juvenile probation to help us alleviate the burdens that we're dealing with?
Tammy will take that. I'm not aware of any.
Are you aware of multiple children's child?
Yes, ma'am. I serve on that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Well, can we make a note, please? Please. And it is real, it's real in our area. So senators and representatives, please, when y'all go back to Montgomery and something comes across your desk, or comes across you or your support, if it has to do with a kid and getting treatment, if it has to do with a child and getting them in placement, let's support that, okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Now, we are, we have two minutes, so if you don't have one more question, uh, you are right next.
I have a doozy too. My name is Danielle Napper, I wanted to get your take on the Cures Grant. Um, if you're familiar with it, it come down from Sampson, where Alabama received nine million dollars, but the Cures Grant only targets medication-assisted therapy along with peer support and targeted case management, it does not give funds for therapy. What is your thoughts on that?
You're right. You know, it's a beginning. I came to this position after that authority, so I'm not an expert on it, but I think it's a beginning. A concern frankly that I have, that it's only for two years, and that's so often what happens, is we get a little bucket of money, we get stuff going, and then it goes away because the money went away. So the way I look at it is, we have two years to think about that and plan for that, and monitor the progress of it and see what needs to be tweaked. Um, but thank you for being informed about that.
Absolutely. Also, if you don't mind me asking real quick, what would you, well, offer suggestions like with the medication management, specifically targeting that with our sources in the area like DHR, probation, things like that, people that are not exactly fans of medication assistance? How do we, do you have any suggestions, how we can work with them on that?
Um, well, I would say go to, to Brian and the local mental health center on that, to, to see what the alternatives are. Um, I know there's a lot of controversy about that particular issue, and, uh, our two physicians may have, have some comments that they wanna make on that as well.
I mean, I think this is, this is, therapy is like, you said earlier, it's, um, it's about risk reduction, it's about harm reduction, and, you know, there, probably not everyone on the state even agrees with, with that. And, and so I totally get that, they're, they're great points to be put onto that. But, you know, from the standpoint of public health, our view is that it keeps people alive, and the data supports that. You know, I mean, when it's used in places the data supports that, and not every, you know, part of the country is ready to embrace it, um, but, but I think it has been shown to work.
Thank you, thank you all so much.
There was, there was one person in line, and if you'll come up here after the program, I'm on this, we're gonna dismiss, the panel will stay up here, and I'm sure they'll, they'll be glad to answer your question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for, for your attention. Thank you, panel, for your time. Thank you, Allison, Allison, for telling us all this. Thank you very much.